Okay, if I can have your attention, please. Ladies and gentlemen, if I can have your attention, we're ready to start the meeting. I'm calling this meeting to order of the Edgefield County Council on August the 12th, 2025, 6:00 PM. Appreciate everybody showing up tonight. We've got a lot of stuff at the front of the agenda that I think will help thin the crowd out a little bit, maybe open up a few seats or standing room. So with that, thank you all for being here. We're going to start with the invocation, which will be led by Councilwoman Tiffany Ireland, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. If everyone will please stand.
First prayer. Dear Heavenly Father, we just thank you so much for this ability to come here and to not only worship and praise you tonight, dear Lord, but to also conduct county business. We thank you for this land that we live in, that we are free to do this, dear Lord, to gather here and to convene. Dear Lord, I just ask that you be with each of us tonight, give us wisdom and guidance, dear Lord, especially be with us who fill these seats up here on council. Give us the discretion and the wisdom to do the best for this county, dear Lord, always with your guiding hand, dear Lord. Thank you for the people who have turned out tonight, dear Lord, to take a part in their local government, and we just pray, dear Lord, that they too will stay involved, dear Lord, and be a part of this process. We thank you for getting everyone here safely. I pray that you get us all home safely. And again, thank you for this ability to gather here tonight, and it's in Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Please join us for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Counsel, for the approval of the agenda, I need to make three notes. One, you see on the agenda, there is a short executive session right before new business, so kind of in the middle of the meeting. Second, we need to move number one, new business, to right after the Nurses Honor Guard demonstration. That has, that's the resolution that goes with them. And also, we need to move item number six of new business to right after number three, that keeps the three opioid items back to back. So just for convenience sake. So are there any questions or comments on those recommendations? Does anybody else have any other recommendations to change in the agenda? Hearing none, as a motion to approve the agenda as I've presented.
I move.
Mr. Moody makes the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
And Dr. Kenyon, seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next is a special recognition, the overview of the Edgefield County Summer Camps, and so I will call on the administrator, if you'd like to kick that off for us, please.
Thank you. So counsel, we have had a very successful summer of, of summer camps, and we're very excited about that. We started small last summer, and it, it just boomed this summer. So we had soccer, art, youth and adult, basketball, line dance, youth and adult, outdoor camps, and cheerleading. We're going to have a brief slideshow overview of the camp, so you can see what, what went on, and I'm happy that, that a lot of the public's here to see it as well. Recreation manager Marcus Shock is going to sort of narrate the slideshow as it plays, and then we're going to do a presentation of certificates for several of the participants who completed a majority of the camps. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Marcus Shock, I'm the Assistant Recreation Director for Edgefield County. So as David was saying, this summer, we had huge success in summer camps. Last year, we only had about three summer camps. We upped that to seven this year, plus the adult programs. So this first one you're seeing is the children's line dancing. We had 11 kids in the children's line dancing this year. Great time. Ms. Jeanette, or I'm sorry, Janelle Stevens was the teacher for it. And then we moved on to basketball camp, where the basketball coach from Strom Thurmond went ahead and taught the kids, and we had 23 kids in basketball camp this year. They had a great time. This was a half-day camp, and that was followed by cheerleading, which came up next, which was also taught by Ms. Janelle. We had a lot of carryovers from the cheerleading and the basketball camps, since they were both half-day camps. There were 17 children in the cheerleading camp. These kids, they worked on a choreographed program throughout the week, and at the end of the week, they presented it to the parents. They really enjoyed it. Our biggest camp this year was probably the outdoor adventure camp, which you're seeing right now. These kids worked on learning about forestry, wildlife, water conservation, and survival skills. We had a number of guest speakers. We had two different age groups, so this was two weeks long. This was a huge success, all-day camp, all week. They culminated the week by ending up in Slade Lake in kayaks. And then second half of that day, you'll be able to see, if you go around town, the beginning of the rail trail over by Piedmont Tech, they painted two different storm drains to bring awareness to pollution, which is what you're seeing right here. Local artist Vince Russo went ahead and depicted those storm drains, and the kids came through and painted them, and the finished product is out for you, out there for you guys to see right now. These kids learned so much through the week with this camp. It's absolutely amazing, the, how they grew throughout the week. This stuff on Slade Lake was absolutely amazing. Some of these kids have never been in a kayak before, and they went out there and just had a absolute blast. So that was a huge success there. The next camp we ended up with was the Arts and Crafts Camp, which will pop up here in just a second. In total, that outdoor camp had a total of 54 kids in it, so it was a huge, huge success. Up from last year, we basically had only a couple camps to offer. This is your Arts and Crafts Camp. There were 14 kids in this camp, and they also worked on a number of projects throughout the week, and culminating in a larger kind of mural project. They had an absolute blast, and a number of these kids were in multiple camps, which you're going to notice here in a little bit. This is our soccer camp, second year for the soccer camp. We had 37 kids in the soccer camp this year, so a huge turnout there, aged, ages eight through 12. So it was a huge success, and they, as it was hot in July, very hot, we had some water activities for them. The Edgefield Fire Department came out and sprayed a hose for them, and even our very own Aretha Ubankes contributed to the fun as well. Adult line dancing, we had four adults participate in this, and they also worked throughout the week on a choreographed program to learn the art of line dancing. And then we had the adult art class. There were 11 people that participated in this, and they also worked on a project throughout the week. Overall, it was just a huge success throughout the week. We have some awards we're going to give out, some certificates of appreciate, or achievement, I'm sorry, to children who, basically, they attended a majority of the camps, so we want to recognize these children. I got to meet them all throughout the week, and they're all great kids. So basically, what we're going to do is, we're going to have the kids come up to me and get the certificate, and we're all going to wait down here at the end, and we're going to take a picture with counsel afterwards. So once the children come up here, just make sure you wait here with me, and we'll take a picture, and good to go. So Albany Broad.
Broadway.
You do the cards. You do the cards. You do the cards.
We have Callie Counts. London, Kenyon.
Missing one. There you go. You get this one already. There you go, Margaret.
And Malaysia Mays. Malaysia got to hop in the kayak with me, too, so she had a blast. We have two missing. We have Aria Hunter and Mason Allen, and they both had an amazing time. All these kids came to, I think about three to four of the camps. It was great to see names being repeated throughout the week, but we hope the kids enjoyed it, and we thank the parents very much. And like I said, just hang out here for a second, we'll have counsel come down and take some pictures.
All right.
Right, right, right here, just so you can see you. Maybe do it like this.
One, two, three. One, two, three. Thank you.
Yes, yes.
Before you all leave.
If I can have your attention, Dr. Kenyon has something she wants to say, too, to the group.
On behalf of the Recreation Department, I would like to thank Mr. Nick Wayz, Marcus Shock, and Sam Jamil, and our County Secretary, Ms. Ubankes, for organizing these eight camps. I've heard from many constituents expressing their gratitude for having these camps in our county, eliminating the need to travel to another county. They are looking forward to next year's camp. Personally, I have witnessed my grandchildren fall in their sleep in the car from exhausted after camp. When I asked them daily, "How was camp today?", they eagerly respond, "It was fun." They have learned valuable skills such as dribbling a basketball and not running with it, cheering while moving, painting and crafting in 4H, and kayaking safely with a partner. In soccer, they enjoy a lot of running and learn teamwork and persistent. One of my grandchildren even mentioned, "Grandmama, when we see Ms. Ubankes coming, we know it's time to eat." I also want to give a big shout out to all the coaches who helped with these camps, and thank our County Council for supporting this resourcefulness in our county. Thank you.
Thank you to Dr. Kenyon, and all our campers, and all our volunteers and staff. Thank you so much for doing all that. I'll let our clerk get back to our seat, and we'll go on with the next thing. All right, counsel, next on the agenda is the Nurses Honor Guard Tribute Ceremony Demonstration. And for the record, they contacted me probably three or four months ago, asking to get on the agenda, and I said, "Yeah, August will be a light agenda, go ahead." But time catches up with you, so, and some things happen, so. So I'll call on them to go ahead and come down and let you do your discussion and, and the demonstration, please.
I'm Carla Doran, and I am a part of the Nurses Honor Guard of South Carolina, along with these ladies. We are part of the Sandhills Division, which is a new division, the last division that was created in South Carolina. The Sandhills Division organized July of last year, and we've grown to 40, a little over 40 nurses in just a year's time, so that's pretty amazing. We're the largest group in South Carolina, and the Nurses Honor Guard has been around in South Carolina for five years, but a lot of people never heard of us. So we wanted to come out today to do a demonstration, to show you what we're about, and to tell you a little about us. And what we do is, whenever there are nurses who have passed, we will, if the family asks for us, will come out and volunteer our time at the funeral service and do a last tribute to that nurse and her honor or her time of service that she did throughout her career. And it is, it is something that we do for free. All you have to do is ask. We try to get the word out that we're here. So if you know of any nurses that may pass, and you would like to have a tribute done for that, please let us know. The funeral homes do know about us. Just ask for us, and we will be glad to come and perform a final call to duty. We also do a living tribute. If you have nurses who are at end of life, and you would like to have a living tribute done, it's on the same order, but it's a little different wording, and we make that nurse an honorary member of our Nurses Honor Guard. And we just recently had the pleasure of having a nurse who celebrated her 100th birthday just a couple of weeks ago, that we incorporated in as an honorary guard member. So if you have any questions, my name's Carla Doran. The ladies can speak to you, the funeral homes know about us, and there are chapters that cover every county in the state of South Carolina now. We have full coverage all across the state. And it is also in other states as well. This is not just South Carolina. Other states have Honor Guards as well, so it's, it's really a wonderful thing to, an honor to be a part of, to be able to have a final tribute for our fellow colleagues in their end of life. So I'm going to step back, and they're going to do the service for you. Nursing is a calling, a lifestyle, a way of living. Nurses here today pay tribute to our colleague Clara Barton, and we honor her life as a nurse. We want to formally acknowledge Clara for her many years of service as a nurse, and to note that her accomplishments are measured not by those years, but in the lives she touched through her dedication, compassion, and servant's heart. Thank you, Clara Barton, for your legacy of caring and for all you gave to the nursing This lamp is a symbol of all Florence Nightingale stood for, comfort and kindness, gentleness and courage, and unwavering devotion to duty. Perhaps deep down, Florence Nightingale knew even then that the light from the lamp was This white rose symbolizes Clara's devotion to her nursing profession. Nurse Clara Barton, we honor you this day and give you a white rose to symbolize our respect and appreciation for being our nursing colleague. Will all nurses present, please stand as we do a final call to duty. Nurse Clara Barton, please report for duty. Nurse Clara Barton, please report for duty. Nurse Clara Barton, please report for duty. Nurse Clara Barton, thank you for your service. You are now relieved of your nursing duties. That concludes the service. One thing I wanted to say is, we do have a real white rose we present on the casket or the urn, whatever the case may be. And this is a box along with our Florence Nightingale lamp that is actually lit, that we use in the service, and we present it to the family members. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you first. Let's give them a hand. Thank you. It's a beautiful service, and we thank you for doing that. And if I'll ask all of you to stay right there one moment, we have a little business to take care of related to you. So counsel, we moved number one, new business, to right after this presentation. This is the consideration of approval of Resolution 25260001, a resolution celebrating the Nurses Honor Guard of South Carolina for its dedication to honoring nurses and preserving the traditions of the nursing profession. And if I can, let me read for everyone the resolution that we'll be presenting tonight. "A resolution honoring and celebrating the Nurses Honor Guard of South Carolina for its dedication to honoring nurses and preserving the traditions of the nursing profession and other matters related thereto. Whereas nursing is more than a profession, it is a calling answered by those who step into life's most fragile moments with steady hands and compassionate hearts, providing care, comfort, and dignity when it matters most. And whereas the Nurses Honor Guard of South Carolina, founded in 2019 by Stormy Shealy and a group of nurses in the upstate, has grown into a statewide organization of more than 300 members who volunteered their time to honor their fellow nurses. And whereas the Nurses Honor Guard of South Carolina provides all services at no cost to the nurses or their families, working quietly, without recognition, to ensure that no nurse's life of service goes unrecognized. Now therefore be it resolved, in a meeting duly assembled this 12th day of August of 2025, the Edgefield County Council hereby honors and celebrates the Nurses Honor Guard of South Carolina for its commitment to honoring nurses, preserving tradition, and reminding all of us of the enduring impact of a life dedicated to care, adopted this 12th day of August 2025." Counsel, you've heard the resolution. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Mr. Talbot makes the motion, I think. Ms. Ireland seconded. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. So thank you all, and we're going to come down there and present you with the, with the resolution.
Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
While we're waiting on people, if you need an agenda, the clerk has extra copies
of an agenda. If you'll raise your hand if you need one. and we've got the PowerPoint presentation coming up next, if you want to. Is Doc going to handle that? Okay. So counsel, we will move on with the agenda now, and the next, we also have guest speakers, as you can see from the agenda, Dr. Matt Logan, the President and CEO of SELF, and the, and Will Gordon, the Vice President, Chief Administrative Officer for the Edgefield County Healthcare. As they're making their way up, I want to tell everybody that the county and SELF have been working on a new lease agreement for what was Edgefield County Hospital. The current lease agreement began in 2019, and it ends in 2029. And now that we're about six years of runtime with SELF, we believe they've done a good job operating Edgefield County Hospital, now called Edgefield County Healthcare. So far, SELF has invested a lot of money in our hospital, and I'll let Dr. Logan tell you more about that. And after their presentation, I'll discuss more details about the proposed agreement, but I'll turn it over to our guests.
Thank you. Thanks pretty much, and thanks for having us, Will and I, here today. It's kind of hard to follow the Nursing Honor Guard and the rec team, so recreational awesome stuff y'all are doing in Edgefield. My mom's a nurse, and my wife's a nurse, so it kind of tugs at the heartstrings a little bit to watch ceremonies like that. But like Dean was sharing, we are about half, a little over halfway through a 10-year lease arrangement with Edgefield County, Edgefield County Hospital. We really feel this relationship has been mutually beneficial for the citizens of Edgefield County, as well as Self Regional Healthcare, and we certainly want to continue this long into the future. We've had several meetings over the last several months internally, thinking about some investments that we want to do in Edgefield County, and, you know, securing a longer-term lease will, I think, make my hospital board and us feel better about doing that. Some, some, just a quick, a couple examples, you know, like a CT scanner, we probably need another one here before too long. Those are over a million-dollar type equipment that are pretty big investments, and we're committed to do it, and we're committed to bring advanced care here to Edgefield County, and we want to do that long into the future. So that's why we're here. Will is actually going to give the PowerPoint presentation, and again, just as a reminder, I'm the Chief Executive Officer of Self Regional Healthcare. Will is one of the Vice Presidents of Self Regional, and is the Chief Administrative Officer, the Head Administrator, working in Edgefield County day in, day out, as the Chief Administrative Officer of the hospital here. So I'm going to let him give this presentation here, and give you some of the, some of the things that we've done, tell you all about some of those things, and some things we're planning on doing.
Thank you, Dr. Logan. Thank you, members of the council. As Dr. Logan said, I just wanted to review and share some of the history of our partnership. We began our, our partnership, the workings of that, back in October of 2018, and over the last years since we have partnered, we've invested over two and a half, or 2.2 million in capital investments alone, and a lot of those have been regulatory-type items. So there were some renovations of clinical spaces to make things look nicer and make them more... to make things look nicer and make them more appealing for our patients and easier for our staff to work, but also things like fire alarm panels, med vacuum systems, those things that don't sound like a lot of fun, but you've just got to have to keep the hospital running. So a lot of investment there in those spaces. Building automation system was quite a big project for us, and that's paved the way for additional projects moving forward. I would also share that beyond capital, from a human resources perspective, we did a compensation analysis, and that led to salary increases for the largest majority of our team members. We've also expanded the team member benefits. One of the things that's, that's unique in terms of our benefits is that we offer tuition reimbursement for our team who want to advance their, their education at over $5,000 a year, and that's available on day one of employment. So really good opportunity for the folks locally who want to continue to work with us and grow in their careers. We also expanded our security team. We're very fortunate in Edgefield to have great relationship with both the city and county law enforcement agencies. But we did, in addition to that, add SLED-certified officers on site so that that was just one more layer of security for the organization. In our emergency department, we were able to eliminate the use of locum, locum positions and have a core team who rotate to cover that. And they're seeing over 6,000 patients a year in the ER there. On our rural health clinic, so for our medical practice, family medicine, we built a new building there just in front of the hospital, and we worked really hard to recruit new family practice providers. We have, just this year, Byron Mathis is a physician assistant who's joined, and we're excited to have Dr. Luke Saunders joining us next year in the summer. So a lot of work there. We've also brought maternity care that's family medicine-based from our Montgomery Center to that location, and just since 2024, grown 24%. That is a very, very busy practice. They're seeing over 25,000 visits a year. Beyond the family medicine appointments there, we also, to help serve the Edgefield County residents, are bringing in specialists. So we have a rotation of orthopedics, general surgery, urology, podiatry, gastroenterology, and cardiology. We're excited that we'll be adding ENT in September, also a big need with Dr. Valente joining our, our group as well. And they're seeing over 3,000 patients here in Edgefield a year. One of the additional things we did that's really helped, not only from internal standpoint and ease of referrals, but also a huge benefit for our patient population is the implementation of Epic. Those who have Epic or patients in the system understand the benefits of MyChart. So that's been also a really big win. One of the things that we're working on currently is a, we were awarded a $1.7 million DHHS infrastructure grant, and that's been instrumental in expanding and renovating our pharmacy services so we can expand the formulary and take on additional disease processes in patient populations there. Our partnership has gone well beyond the hospital. We also have partnered with Strom Thurmond High School to launch the Strom Thurmond Human Services and Business Academy. We're really proud of that. That's a first of its kind in the state, and it's allowing these young folks the opportunity, not only to have the didactic classroom time, but also to spend time at both the Edgefield Campus Hospital and also in Greenwood, so that they're getting some additional clinical exposure. Additionally, we're completing the needs assessment. Of course, mammal, mobile mammography is seeing close to 400 mammal cases a year as well. And we're bringing the Express Mobile Unit down for health fairs and events. Beyond that, everybody remembers the COVID scenario and the amount of effort that went into that. And during Hurricane Helene, we were able to, as one of the few places in town that had generator support and a kitchen that was powered by natural gas, we were able to feed a lot of the first responders, law enforcement. So really, really want to be that community partner. From here on, as Dr. Logan said, our goal is to continue our partnership and to grow even bigger. Those additional investments can include not only that CT scanner that Dr. Logan mentioned, but the renovation of our lab. It's a really small space, and that's coming. We bought lab equipment, but now we need to expand the lab. It won't be long before we need a roof and some HVAC equipment, and all of those items come in the half-million-dollar to million-dollar jounce. So it is a huge investment. Also, as part of this, we are extending and committing to a primary care presence in Johnston. We're, since the retirement of Dr. Hugh Morgan, we're working to open a rural health clinic in Johnston. We hope to have that up and running by end of October. In the interim, we have the Mobile Express Bus, and we have it parked right uptown there in Johnston. And we started last week, and we'll have it there weekly until we get this practice open so that we can help serve that community. And we also are taking many of those patients to the Edgefield Medical Center to see our providers there and also trying to help them with any virtual care visits where that's appropriate. So really, really thankful for the partnership, excited about what it looks like moving forward, and we'll certainly entertain any questions anyone has.
Council, do you have any questions right now?
Yeah, I'm just being nosey. What are y'all doing with the old chapel? There's renovation at the chapel? What, are you just renovating the chapel, or are you putting something else there?
Just renovating the chapel. It was heartbreaking, the water damage that we sustained during those severe rains.
Okay.
We had water intrusion around basically three walls, all of those who were, that were addition to the old hospital. So we had to do some extensive abatement. We were getting some issues in terms of mold and building there that had to be closed off. But it's going to be reopened as a chapel, and we're actually getting very, very close. That drywall's been complete, new ceiling and flooring's going in, I think, next week.
Okay, thanks.
All right, so first, thank you two for being here tonight. So let me just say, as everybody heard, SELF is pleased with our partnership, it's worked well together. And to make larger investments, they wanted a longer-term lease. We wouldn't expect them to make major investments. We're talking, as you've heard, millions of dollars during the next three years only to have the county say, "We're not going to renew a 10-year contract." So that just didn't make sense. So with that background, this new lease would be for 30 years instead of 10. And I will note for everyone that this agreement comes with an exit clause on both sides in case one or the other isn't living up to the agreement. So that's, that's there. Also, the county currently pays SELF $540,000 a year, which is the amount the Edgefield County Hospital receives every year from the county budget. However, under this new agreement, that number would drop to 440,000, so from 540,000 to 440,000 per year. And instead of a flat amount of money each year, we would be adding 2% per year to the base number, not compounded annually. What that means is $8,800 would be added each year to that 440,000. Finally, as you heard, SELF has agreed to add into the contract taking over the operation of the medical building in Johnston since that office closed at the end of May when Dr. Morgan retired. So at the moment, the attorneys are finalizing some final housekeeping details. Once that's done, SELF will review it one more time with their board. We'll have the council and our staff review it one more time very shortly. And if everyone agrees, then it'll be on the agenda for a vote in either September or October. And then we'll, we'll announce it, of course. And then later in this agenda tonight, we'll take up the Johnston Medical Building in terms of them selling it to the county. So that's what I have tonight. Thank you two for being here, appreciate it.
Thank you all.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
All right, Council. Next is the approval of the minutes. All we have is July 1, 2025, regular monthly meeting minutes. Any questions or comments on those minutes? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Mr. Moody makes the motions, there's a second.
Second.
And Dr. Kenyon seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor please signify by raising your hand. All opposed, motion passes unanimously. Next is our first public comment period. So some of you haven't been here before, so let me explain three sections on this agenda so we'll all be on the same page. So we have two public comment sections, one in the beginning of the meeting, which is what we're going to do now, and one toward the end. The difference is, the first public comment meeting, excuse me, public comment section is for only items on the agenda. So if you signed up for the first public comment period, it must be something that is actually on the agenda. The last one at the end, the second one, is for everything else you might want to talk about that is not on the agenda. So let's make that clear. Also, just so happens, we have three public hearings tonight. So if you're here to talk for one of the three items on your agenda that, under public hearing, you won't want to speak in the first public comment section, you want to speak in the public hearing. So if that's clear, and I'll try to make that clear as we go along. So with that, I'll ask our clerk if I can get the list of people who signed up for the first public comment period. And let me remind you what the agenda says. You have four, excuse me, you have five minutes, but at four minutes, our clerk will give you a verbal warning that you're at four minutes, and she will also tell you when you reach five minutes. When you reach five minutes, your time is up. Also, you note on the agenda that there is only 30 minutes allowed. So if we have more speakers and we run out of time, then that ends it. And you can't take some of your time and give it to someone else. So your time is your time, whether you take one minute or five minutes. So if everybody is familiar with the rules, and I would encourage you to be certainly courteous to your fellow people because there are a fair number of people who signed up here. But I don't know what you signed up for, so we'll see. So I'll start in the order that you signed up, and this looks like, and I apologize if I mispronounce names. Thara Adams-Briggs. And what's your topic tonight? You didn't put it down.
Um, I came about rural agriculture district. What do you call it?
That's the public hearing. You want to wait till the public hearing?
Okay.
That comes up next, so thank you. All right, Tim Campbell. Okay, then you'll wait till the public hearing, please. Tom Whitzel. Okay, public hearing. Barry Wallenberg. Where's?
Hollenberg.
Oh, Hollenberg, I'm sorry. Now, this says RV, if this is the RV, that would be.
Signed up for the not on the agenda.
That would be the second public comment period, so, okay. Let's see, Randy Dietrichson. Randy?
Yeah.
And what did you sign up for, if you didn't list it?
Horse Creek Nature Preserve.
Okay, so you're in the second public comment period. Tom McCain. So it, so at the end. Okay. Milton, haven't tried reading the last name. Milton. Yes, that's it. Right, then you'll be in the public hearing. Jason Cope. Okay, then that'll be at the end. Okay. Juan and.
Murray.
Yes.
Public hearing.
Public hearing, okay. Dawn Holyfield. So at the end, okay. Mary Carpenter, am I reading that right? RV, okay, that'll be at the end. And then Brooke Ballyet, Ballyet? So you'll be in the public hearing. All right, after all that, nobody's speaking in the first public comment period, huh? So in terms of, other than the public hearing? I'm sorry?
She said she signed up too.
Okay, then you'll be in the public hearing.
Public hearing, yeah.
All right, so Council, hearing nobody who wants to speak on anything other than the public hearing items, I'll close this first public comment period and move to reports, Council. Any comments or questions on the reports? Hearing none, I will move on to public hearings. There are three public hearings, and for a public hearing, it's one of the things you don't have to sign up for. So the signup list, we just went through a minute ago. I'll just call on you as you raise your hand, so you'll just come up. So public hearings, let me read the first one. The first one is Ordinance 2425-009, an ordinance authorizing and approving development of a joint industrial park, excuse me, industrial and business park pursuant to Section 4-1-170, Code of Laws of South Carolina, 1976, as amended in conjunction with Aiken County, the park. Such park to be, at the time of its initial development, geographically located in Aiken County and to include certain property now or to be owned and operated by a company identified as Clop Aiken, SCLLC, one of more affiliates and/or project sponsors, to the execution and delivery of a written park agreement with Aiken County as requirement of payment fee in lieu of ad valorem taxes with respect to park property and the sharing of revenues and expenses of the park, three, the distribution of revenues from the park within Aiken County. Is anyone here to speak on that public hearing topic? Okay, hearing none, I will close that public hearing and move to the second one. This is Ordinance 2425-010, an ordinance authorizing and approving, one, development of a joint county industrial and business park pursuant to Section 4-1-170, the Code of Laws of South Carolina, 1976, as amended in conjunction with Aiken County, the park. Such park to be, at the time of its initial development, geographically located in Aiken County and to include certain property now or to be owned and/or operated by DCB North Augusta LLC, one of more affiliates and/or project sponsors, to the execution and delivery of a written park agreement with Aiken County as to the requirement of the payment of fee in lieu of ad valorem taxes with respect to park property and the sharing of revenues and expenses of the park, three, the distribution of revenues from the park within Aiken County. Is anyone here to speak on that ordinance in this public hearing? Okay, hearing none, Council, I'll close the public hearing for that ordinance and move to the last one. This is Ordinance 2425-011, an ordinance to amend the Edgefield County zoning map to include changes for the newly created Rural Agriculture Land Preservation Zoning District. I think we have a few of you who want to speak on that. So I saw this hand first, so I'm going to ask you to come on up. And as she comes up, I'll just be calling on you. You all get a chance to speak if, but listen, several things. One, introduce yourself by name and where you live, so we'll know. And also, I ask you to please be courteous to your, to your fellow people and don't use time that, you know, everybody could be using. So with that, I will call on you.
Thank you. I am Summers Padarvis. I'm a lifetime resident of Edgefield County, and I live in Edgefield County currently. I'm also a small business owner, and I'm also, I would consider a real estate expert, because that is what I do for a living. I think it's great that we're considering zoning. I think everybody in this room can agree that we want to keep Edgefield rural and beautiful, but also have healthy growth that does not deter or take away from that beautiful aspect of our county. I think that we have a unique opportunity here to make sure we develop correctly in a healthy manner. I think this is a very good step in the right direction. I would like to see a little more nuance and change, a bit of refining to what has been presented. I'm not going to get into the minutia of all of that now. But one thing I would definitely like to see added to this would be overlay districts controlling what is built and how it looks. No one here wants a Belvedere. No one here wants a Whiskey Road or a Washington Road. And I certainly don't want to drive down Sweetwater or Martin Town and see 800 two-acre tracks against the road. I would rather see all of it, you can't have all of it, but the majority of it stay rural with pockets of planned development to keep the most agricultural as possible versus, I'd rather see 800 homes on, I don't know how many acres, than 800 homes over 2,000 acres, if that makes sense. I want to condense where appropriate to let more ag be left untouched or developed. And we have people moving here, and I have schoolteachers I can't get in homes. We need a mix of affordability and housing. And I think that by restricting the acreage size, that will affect affordability for a lot of people. I mean, you hear about in the news that you can't get a schoolteacher in a house, and it's happening here. It's not just something you hear about out in another area. And they have a good job, and they have good credit, and you can't get them in a home that's decent. And I think that's a real struggle throughout the county. And we have a great healthcare system, as was presented, and it's getting better, and that draws more and more people to our area. So in addition to zoning and maybe. So in addition to zoning and maybe some tweaking of what's been presented, to allow for some develop as needed and in controlled manner, we really need to consider some overlays so that we have buffers, setbacks, and also controlling their architectural style to sit with our historic and beautiful nature. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Since I went to that side of the room, I'm gonna look on this side of the room. Who's next? A gentleman back here with his hand up?
My name's Tom Whitzel, and I live in Mount Vintage. Please understand I'm not opposed to zoning. My concern is how the new RA zoning is being developed, at the speed and approach behind it. I fear the proposal is being driven more by emotion than by careful practical analysis of long-term consequences for Edgefield County citizens and the economic development. I'd ask the council to carefully consider the following major concerns. Affordability and land scarcity. Edgefield County's average household income is sixty-seven thousand ninety-two dollars. At that income level, many local households can realistically afford homes of about two-hundred-and-fifty-four-thousand. With raw residential lots already costing roughly fifty thousand dollars or more, a mandatory two-acre minimum lot size would increase homeowner costs by approximately a hundred and twenty thousand, effectively raising the cost barrier to homeownership and limiting housing options. This will effectively discriminate against affordable permanent foundation housing options. The proposed minimum lot size and lot width of two hundred feet is a one-size-fits-all rule that can create several negative results. Higher land cost and increased scarcity of buildable lots. Suburban sprawl along rural corridors such as Sweetwater Road could see driveways every a hundred feet, producing traffic and safety problems like larger suburban arterials at rush hour. Questions about bus stops, safe waiting areas for children, and increased wear and roads designed for far fewer residents. Higher infrastructure maintenance costs spread across a small tax base rather than absorb more efficiently in high-density development. Family subdivision problems. The zoning is drafted prevents many common intergenerational land transfers unless property owners have four-plus acres. The proposed list of prohibited uses appears to eliminate many mom-and-pop home businesses. That undermines small business entrepreneurship and harms the local economy. There's a common misconception that lower-density development necessarily reduces pressure on public services and roads. In practice, well-designed cluster developments can reduce infrastructure strain because the developers build and pay for the roads, water, and sewer infrastructure that are then turned over to the county and the utility companies while creating a larger use base to spread maintenance cost. Growth will pay for itself if done correctly. Roads are often improved as part of a higher-density developments, and the per capita cost of remediation and upgrades is usually lower than the long-dispersed upgrades required by sprawl. Public service costs. Police, fire, and EMS are not linear per household. More taxpayers paying into the system tend to lower costs per person and improve service levels. Just as an example, the city of Edgefield stands to obtain a grant for a new fire engine due to the development happening within the city, which is free to Edgefield. The national averages for planning and staffing levels are often used when projecting service needs. I'd ask that you use local projections rather than assumptions. From an ecological standpoint, scattered two-acre lots often fragment the inhabitants. Cluster developments can preserve twenty to thirty percent or more of a project's area as a continuous national, natural habitat. Potential negative impact on property taxes or values. Lower property values result in less property tax collected. And to ensure a fair, rational, and equitable outcome, I respectfully request the council to table the current RA zoning proposal and not adopt it in its present form. Form a diverse group of qualified planners, civil engineers, economic development professionals, county staff, and citizens, including landlords, small business owners, and advocates for affordable housing. Perform impact analysis before any adoption. Allow reasonable grandfathering or phased rules for home-based businesses, and hold public listening sections across the county. In closing, I believe there's a reasonable middle ground that manages development well, protects the rural character of residents' value, and keeps Edgefield County affordable and economically vibrant. I would also ask that these comments be entered into the record of the meeting. Thank you for your time.
All right, I'm looking to this side of the room. Who would like to go over here? I see a hand right here. Yes, ma'am? Yes, ma'am?
It's hard to hear what they're saying. Could they have a speaker? Or something, where we could hear a better, because the first lady's speaking, we couldn't understand the things she was saying.
I apologize, the sound system's up as high as it'll get. All right, so, okay, thank you. So I'm gonna go back here to this young lady back here.
My name is Katie Ard. I live on Martin Town Road. I have some concerns about having the small lot sizes, and I apologize for having a different opinion. He made valid points. However, my points are this. We don't have the water system to handle tons and tons and tons of wells. We'll never get city water out our way. If y'all keep having small lot sizes and making them smaller and smaller, our aquifer will run out. I've seen that happen in North Augusta. We need to also not have such small lot sizes when you've got well on one side and sewer on the other, and DHEC's not doing a really good job about keeping our water system safe. If you put septic's that close together, over the course of a few years, the water tables are gonna be in danger. That's just one of many. We have infrastructure issues. Martin Town Road is in awful shape. Yes, that's from logging trucks from the hurricane. However, the higher the traffic, the worse wear and tear. The same thing with the putting in neighborhoods. If they are not properly inspected and those roads aren't properly done, when you start having high density, the cost of those roads come back onto the county after a certain amount of time. So we need to have, if we have high development, we need better oversight and make sure the roads and infrastructure are done properly so the burden doesn't come back to Edgefield County and cost us taxpayers money because it's not done properly. Another thing that we're concerned with is traffic flow. Over there on Sportsman's Corner, it's a miracle there's not more deaths every year. And now that y'all approve that mine to go in, we need a traffic circle. If y'all allow more high-density houses to be inbuilt, that traffic is only gonna get worse. We need to have lot sizes to keep this place as special as it is. We don't want to be Grove Town. We don't want to be Evans. And God forbid, I love Aiken, has my heart since I was three years old, but it's getting overgrown too. People are moving here because they want what Edgefield County, the uniqueness and the rural ability that we have to offer. Please don't make us into Grove Town. Thank you.
All right, I'm looking on this side of the room. Young lady back here in the back, yes? Yes?
I am Thara Adams-Briggs, and I am representing the Lanham family. And we got the letter about our property being considered for this rural agricultural district, and why I don't have a speech about the benefits. We, as a family, have questions about why did you consider rezoning our property, including our property as a part of the rezoning? How is that rezoning going to affect the tax rate? You have on here that there would be restrictions on large-scale commercial and industrial uses. We wanted to know what would be the restrictions. And lastly, we wanted to know what gendered this rezoning, the consideration of rezoning and including our property in that rezoning. Is there now an influx of requests from industry or, or commercial or developers? Because I'm from Columbia, and I drove from Columbia, and there is a lot of development of houses. I call it matchboxes that you can see off the interstate, and they are literally joined together. It's so many of them. And we, as a family, what you had in the letter, it sounds like a good idea, but we're concerned that our interests as property owners, and we inherited this property from our grandfather, who has a miraculous story about acquiring that property. And so we want to just make sure that our interest is thought of and not just maintaining the rural feel for Edgefield, although we're all for that. None of us live on the property, but we're concerned about our property because we inherited from our grandfather, and he told us, "Don't let it go." And so we just want to make sure that we benefit. We're not against development. We're not against restricting development. We are for making sure that our interest is number one. Thank you.
Not now, but when we get to the item of, under old business, maybe you can address some of those questions. You know, if you'll take a few notes, Mr. Hark? All right, so I'm looking to this side of the room now. Who would like to be next? Go ahead, yes.
I'm Milton Avery. I go by Mickey. My wife Pam and I live, we have four tracts within what's gonna be designated RA. You know, I've gone from Richmond County to Columbia County, and now I'm in Edgefield County. I am a newcomer. I've been here twenty-seven years. So we came here because of the beauty, the beauty of the land. We're on Stevens Green. I would like to applaud planning and zoning for coming up with the RA, because I think what it does is maintain the character of the land. It also recognizes, I mean, in eighty-one years, I have realized, I can't outrun development. It will come, but it will come one of two ways. There are many people who don't want any organization, they don't want any zoning, they don't want anybody to tell them what to do with their property. But if that's the way it is, you're gonna end up with crowds like this every time anybody tries to do something, which is the purpose of planning and zoning. And I applaud what they're doing. I think it is, it recognizes development is coming, and we need to have development in it organized, not half-hazard. I mean, I've seen both. And believe me, you don't want void to be half-hazard. Thank you.
I'm looking to this side of the room now. Raise your hand if you'd like to speak. On this topic. All right, then I'll go to this side of the room. Anybody wants to speak? I'm sorry, back in the back, I'll ask Mr. Hudson, yes?
Hey, the Lord intervening on all of us.
Thank you.
He needs to. The swamp is the swamp. Anyway, I commend y'all for paying our bills and not giving yourself hundred-thousand-dollar raises. That's praise God, that's a blessing right there, amen? And that you get a backbone and do what the people... I've come in this place three years ago and told them all this. Nobody's listening, okay? We told them they was gonna rape this county, developers, and some of them are here. They in town, out of town. They want money. You don't want money, you just want your land. Some of you want some ordinances. These ordinances can be great, but they got, like the Bible says, lawyers with whole information. So these zoning things, got little things hidden in it that you didn't catch. Now, some of it's got some commercial stuff in it too. So what you have to do is get it together. If you don't, the developers own this place. So the church needs to get it together, get online, get it together, and tell these people what you want, instead of talk, okay? Gout is a sin. We shouldn't be talking about stuff, we should get involved. Now, just to give you some ideas, the EMT, my cousin had a heart attack. They come out to her and said, "Oh, maybe you oughta go see your doctor tomorrow." So we improve that instead of worrying about zoning, okay? I told them three years ago, the developers of Washington causing dirt and streams and water to go in all our creeks and stuff. Ain't nothing changed. Even now, I asked them to have an engineer so we can manage our water and sewer and everything. They kicked it down the road. Aiken's still doing it, DHEC, and they're doing a sorry job. They know that. It ain't even being managed right. I had a contractor down by my house, I went over to see him, he done washed out in the road three times to kill people. And I asked him, I said, "What you doing?" He said, "Nobody tells me nothing, I'll do whatever people tell me." So we don't have an organization here to handle what's going on. I know they trying to make some ordinances and stuff, but it should have been done three years ago. So really, who, what's the priorities here? It's not, let's really doing what we want. Now, some of you want zoning, but that's good, but let's do the stuff that's important first. EMT, get erosion control. I've been working in other counties, and they did all this development, then they had to spend almost a billion dollars to build retention ponds and take it out on the taxpayers to straighten out what the developers overdeveloped, hello? And then, and this man that said something about growth is good, you need to go back to that school you went to and take your degree back, because when there's growth, taxes rise, they don't go down. I mean, really? And so we need to get together on the basic fundamental things that we need to take care of. And I'm really concerned that I believe y'all kind of putting them off. You want growth, you want everything, but you're not listening. Most everybody here never did it when we had a meeting with North Augusta. We've been having these meetings. You get it? Only thing, way this is gonna change is you gotta change, not them, okay? It's your county, right? You paying the taxes, right? So get it together, just like the Bible says, one of the hand, one of the foot, one of the leg. If we don't come together as a body, you see what the demons try to do to us in Washington. We have a right to have authority and speak and have dominion, not to take it with a gun, but speak it from our mouth and get together. There's nothing wrong with bringing correction and rubbing iron sharpens iron. We have the right to speak, but make them do what we want or move them out of office. Now, we have another group here trying to take over some of these commissioners this pastime. They want a big business to get in here. So if you don't do your job, they still gonna come take place over here, and then you will really have something to cry about, amen? So is our water and the dirt and sewer is not being handled, and they know that. They don't even have the ordinance, okay? And then EMT, I'm throwing it in there, it really needs to be upgraded. We need to have some caliphate people. Maybe they do, but one of them wasn't my cousin, that wasn't caliphate. They told her to go see her doctor tomorrow, she had a heart attack right there when they were there. And so, and what else is there? People are concerned, that some of the older ones are concerned, that the taxes gonna go up or gonna make it commercial and this and that. Zoning's good, but at the same time, it's not. We have to keep each other accountable, amen? That's the bottom line. Am I timed up, baby? No, yes?
If you don't, if you don't have anything else to say, then your time is up.
No, I love to talk. Is it my five minutes still up? You know, it's like a pastor, he can sit here, if he sits too long, they think he's got nothing to offer, but the Lord tells, "Be still and know that I'm God." We don't have to run down the road and make all these deals, and it's sad politicians do that. Even county councils, the swamp is real in this country, and it's up to the people to deal with it. And the church better wake up. And you know something, I get to say this, religion is not Christianity. Religion is a bunch of people getting together and create a posse, trying to take over something. I know we supposed to work with these guys, but they gotta work with us, amen? And that's why we got a republic, because we get to vote and we get to have our opinion. And but remember, religion will not save this country. Christianity is not a religion, amen? It has a Father and a Son and Holy Spirit. It has a heritage, and we know where our heritage comes from. We're in these other religions where they don't even know where they came from, but some prophet gets up and says, "I'm God," and that's a lot in hell.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Appreciate that. Appreciate that. I'm still looking at this side. Anybody want to speak?
Am I allowed to ask questions? I don't really have to speak.
This is a public hearing. Do you have something to say about this particular ordinance? Go ahead. And you got to come up here and introduce yourself and tell who you are.
My name's Mary Leonard, and I live on Thomas Jackson Road. The first I heard about this was the letter. And there's like no explanation. Is there a website we could go to? Is there an explanation from the council as to why you want to do this?
And if those are your questions, we'll take it.
Those are my questions.
Then we will take them up at the ordinance time. I don't want to intervene on your time, so we'll take them up later.
That's it. I just basically, I want more information and I don't know how to get it.
Sure.
Okay?
Thank you.
Is there a map available for these parties?
Yes, yes. It's on the website? It's on the website.
There is a website, then.
What's the name of the website?
If you can't find it, just Google it. You'll find it. Edgefield County Government. Did you want to speak, ma'am? Yes, ma'am. Do you want to speak?
I didn't sound up to speak, but I did have something to say.
On this ordinance?
On this ordinance.
And if you'd come up here, please, and introduce yourself and where you live. And yes.
My name is Beverly Shaw. My husband is Mark Shaw. We live on Sweetwater Road. His family has lived up and down Sweetwater Road. And lots of the people that have lived on Sweetwater Road either married into the Shaw family or the Shaw family married into them. That's been over 200 years ago. My family are very proud of where we live and the land that we have. We don't want it taken away from us. We love it. It's beautiful.
It's yours.
It's ours. And I don't want to see some little matchbox houses on our, what God gave to us. And I have lots of people in here that's related to the Shaw family in one way or the other. They don't want to lose their land either.
Thank you. I'm looking at this side still. Anybody else need to speak over here? Yes, sir?
I'm John Quarles. I grew up in western side of Edgefield County. And just like, like the Shaw family, my, the Quarles family's been in Edgefield County for probably over 200 years. But my brother and I, we own a tract of land that is affected by this proposed joining, zoning. We actually bought this property about 30 years ago. So, that's one reason why we're here. I live in Aiken today, but because of the letter is the reason why I'm here. First off, I want to, I appreciate the county council for allowing this opportunity to hear my viewpoints on county zoning. And I realize that your role in planning is a difficult task. And I thank you for your service, because I realize that there's a lot of effort, there's a lot of things you guys do behind the scenes that people may not necessarily realize that. I appreciate your dedication towards that. Edgefield County has changed the good bit over the years. The old quote, it states that change is the one constant, is very true. Change is going to occur. And I understand the concern to maintain the county's culture and its beauty. And it is, you know, it is an excellent place to raise a family, and the neighbors are great. I go on west side, I remember numerous times. So, neighbors happened out my mom and different things. However, I do believe that zoning should be applied to a limited basis. Areas that are not connected to a county or state maintained road should be excluded for zoning. In fact, this track that my brother and I own, for you to physically get to it, you got to go down two miles down a US forestry road. And then, on the US forestry road, you got to go down a dirt logging road to get to it. That's how you get to it. I don't see that a property like that is going to be a property that's going to demand high residential demand into it. But, and so, for those reasons, this property is also bounded on the north side by the Santee Cooper Transmission Line. And it's within one mile of the new mining operation that's about to occur. And again, I don't have any oppositions to those, those things. But I'm, I'm just saying that don't use one size all in applying the zoning. And, and we also have seen on the zoning map to where certain areas in the area are, have zoning plaques on there, but there are no zones in there. And again, I would, I would, I would encourage that for properties that do not exist, state maintained roads or county maintained roads, I think, I think we should consider not zoning. Well, why, why would I say that? Well, one of the things is that my brother and I, we weren't aware of the zoning going on. And that's, and that's okay, that's our fault. I mean, you guys had it on the web, that's, I'm not faulting you guys for that. But in February, we planted that property in pine trees. Now, I got to tell you, at my age, I'm probably not going to see the final harvest of that. So, you guys got what you wanted. You got a, you got a property that went into agriculture, that didn't get developed. You got that, you go into a forest, we made that investment into it. And the reason why we made that investment into it is just that the property is considered agricultural. And our basic concern is that these RA districts, I know today, they're not going to get taxed as, you know, residential. I understand that. But, you know, whether you believe it or not, there will be different council people here 20 to 30 years from now. And who's to say what they would do? And I can tell you, if we're taxed on residential basis, you want to see farm, forest land to get destroyed, you do that. That's what's going to happen. So, I would, I would advise that you take that into consideration. And so, for those reasons, especially for this property, that, you know, you don't have a state maintained or county maintained road to it, I would suggest to go with no zone for it. I have a set of comments I'll submit over here for the records. Thank you again for your time.
All right, so I'm still looking over here. Does anybody else still need to speak over here on this ordinance? This public hearing for that one? Now, I'll go over here one more time. Anybody over here that we missed? Yes, sir.
What I'm interested in, I've got a place in Edgefield. I don't live.
I'm sorry.
I got a place in Edgefield, but I don't live there. It's 37 Creek Ridge Road. And I was supposed to get me some lake land. And to my industry, taxes keep going up and up and up on that, because I don't live there. But I live on about three miles out of Edgefield. Beddys Academy, Bridgestone, in what, behind me. I got, had this place in Edgefield for forty years. And I've been living in the other place for, shoot, fifty something years probably. And behind me, see, they sold all that land. And that's where you come with the developers. They probably eighty foot behind my house, they going to put 700 houses back in there. Two hundred acres back in there. And right on them to the other end for get the Beddys Academy. They going to put around 300 townhouses. And they already started them. And they already started doing the construction on the other, which is going to be in seven phases. But that's where your commercial and all like that can just shoot you out, you know? And stuff like that, and you've been there fifty something years, you know? But that's where you come with your taxes, you know, and stuff like that. And then, they're probably up by taxes too there. So, they just pushed a little man out, and that's all I can say about it. But I just wanted to tell you about the commercial part. Because I know I'm, I'm looking at it right in my backyard, all the way down. And I thank y'all.
For our minutes, can you tell me what your name is too?
Sherman Carpenter. And where do you live now? I live on 233 Springdale Road. Okay. Grannyville. And I'm about three miles from Edgefield. The other lot is 37 Creek Ridge Road in Edgefield.
Carpenter.
Carpenter.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I think I saw a hand go up over here. Somebody, yes? Right?
John Morgan, have been at Sweetwater. Know Jerry very well. I was one of the first developer property at Edgefield County. I told them 40 years ago, that end of the county's, oh, tail's going to wag the dog. It's coming to pass. High density development, I'm against it. As I said, I started development, five acre lots. Let's learn from the past. You look at Augusta, major cities today, high density, where's your crime? What does a kid got to do if he keep hitting the yard, throw a football or baseball? I'm in favor of large lots. That's what I have to say. I grew up right on Jesus Street.
Thank you. All right, did I miss anybody else on this side? Right there, yes.
Hey, my name's John Wade. Live in Edgefield now. And I'll keep this brief, because I had no plan on speaking tonight. I'm, I'm here with my father-in-law and brother-in-law. They own a multi-generational farm on Sweetwater Road. I have two small children. And my wife wanted to move back up here, be closer to the farm, closer to family. And we've loved it so far. I really just want to urge caution to the council when making these decisions. I'm originally from the Low Country. I grew up in Bridgeland, South Carolina. We've lived in Bluffton before we moved up here. And if any of y'all have been to Hilton Head, gone to the beach, you've seen what's happened in the last five to six years. The areas exploded to the point where even out in Bridgeland, where I'm originally from, I don't recognize my hometown. You can't, you know, put the genie back in the bottle once it's out with development. If you, if you don't zone things correctly, or if you put, you know, make it wide open, developers will develop. You'll get, you know, somebody was talking about Sweetwater Road, driving down Sweetwater Road and seeing individual, you know, lots, four acres apart. Personally, I'd rather see that than 20, 40 acre tracks with quarter acre lots, see soulless lots with houses on top of each other. We've seen that in Bridgeland where I'm from. We've seen it in Bluffton where the schools are now overcrowded. The infrastructure, it's just not prepared for the development they've seen. I don't know that you'd necessarily see that here, but it's a concern. You know, personally, I, I think high density housing, you know, there, there's a need for it. I think somebody spoke to that earlier, where, you know, teachers and firefighters, like, people need places to live. That, that is important. You know, I would prefer to see high density housing closer to already developed city centers. Areas where there's already infrastructure and development available there. And keep it as close to those places as possible and keep rural areas rural. You know, my biggest dream in life, and one of the reasons we moved back here, is for when my children are in college and having their families, that when they drive down Sweetwater Road, it looks relatively similar to what it does today. And so, that's my biggest concern.
Thank you. So, I'm looking this side now. If anybody else want to speak on this ordinance in the public hearing? This is the rural agriculture, so I, yes, ma'am?
Mr. Chairman. It, it's known that we don't own the water department, right? We have no authority over the water.
Mr. Hudson, you're out of order. You've had your time, please sit down. Ma'am, go ahead.
I don't care if he speaks, he can take my minute. Listen, I'm not fancy, I'm not highly educated, I'm not beautiful. My name's Linda Hillman. I'm not one of eloquent speakers. I wouldn't even expect them to speak. I wanted all the educated people to speak. But for me, I have three lots that my mama got 30 years ago. She just passed away. And every lot is 2.63 acres. And my mama's house is in the middle of two of them. So, I'm trying to come to terms where the government thinks they can come in and take .63 of each two acre lot and justify it. I just, that, that's what I'm dealing with. This is the confusion, because this is the thing. We get a letter with no explanation, no understanding, but we're here to talk about something that we can't even have informative information with. We don't even know what we're really discussing. So, we can't hit on those points that are important in this ordinance. So, we really don't know what we're talking about. And that disturbs us, that makes us fearful. And this is why we have a lot of protest and confusion going on, because we're confronted with confusion. You can't make an eloquent decision or an insightful decision when we don't even know really how it works. I really want to know why the government feels like they need .63 three times from my mama's land. What in God's name could y'all possibly need? It doesn't make sense to me. The only thing I can get from it is that to have more taxes, more people paying taxes. And that's, like I said, I'm not highly educated, I'm dumbed down. And I'm good with that, because I'm not running for office. My thing is, what I'm trying to do is protect my mama's land. And I don't want government feeling the need, they need to come basically trespass and tell me I don't have a right to have the farmland. We, we're sinful. We're very sinful people. We want our land, we want our chickens, we have chickens, we're thrilled with them. We have ducks. We probably have more dogs than we need, but they're all well taken care of. But like I said, it's our land, it's our, our right. And I feel like our rights are taken away when we're not, you know, explained what's going on. And I just, it's hard to trust somebody when they can't tell you what's going on. You see what I'm saying? So, that's the way I feel about it. Like I said, I'm not eloquent, but that's just how I feel about it. And this, my mama got this land 30 years ago. And it's still in probate. So, ain't nobody getting it until everything's decided. But with saying that, I've not been able to sleep since I got this notice. And I probably look haggard, but I don't care. But that, I'm just, I want peace of mind when I go to sleep, that I don't have to wake up tomorrow and deal with something that's just, life-changing for me, but not for the city. If y'all don't do this, y'all not losing nothing, really. From what we understand, we don't really know what's involved, what's the plans. I don't mean to stare at you, you're just in the middle. But I really don't know what else I can add, but I'm, just like I said. It, well, that's true. Our, our land is behind the national forest. So, if y'all want to develop there, I'm all for it. Just don't take my mama's land. That's really all I have. I don't need five minutes to make a point, I guess. So, just please reconsider. I mean, you, you had a standing room only. You would have had more people, I'm sure, if it been a bigger building. Because some of my neighbors that have five and a half acres, um, two and a half acres didn't even get a card, and I don't know why. I mean, if the two acres was the limit, a lot of my neighbors aren't here. They never got a notice. I showed it to them, but I don't, I don't think they came. So, that's all I have.
Thank you. All right, I'm going back. I'm sorry, I'm, I'm have to wait on that. Anybody? Yes.
Kind of want to follow up where she's coming from. Craig Usher, 15 scenic drive. I was on the website today in preparation for trying to understand exactly what's going on. And the website to me seemed, I was able to find the map. I was able to find the charts, but everything was very confusing to read. There was no, there needs to be a legend or some way to explain some more clarity. Because I don't have a college education. I read this five times, and I can't follow this. So, more or less, like dumb it down a little bit so we can understand it, you know? Because have it in the, in the charts, have some way, some, some breakdowns or explanations. I mean, the federal government writes at an eighth grade level when we plan projects. You know, it's, it's, it's very confusing. So, I would just, and everybody seems to be a little confused about exactly what's going on here. There's no clarity. We're just here, we're hearing what people are saying, gestures. I'm following some of them, I'm not following some of them. Because there's no clarity, there's no information out there to easily read and available. So, I would just suggest maybe make the information a little more accessible and reader-friendly. So, that's all I got.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'm still looking at this side of the room. Yes, sir?
Ryan Smith, New Creek Drive, 232 New Creek Drive. Rural and agriculture land preservation zoning. I don't see the agriculture here. We already are having issues of, we run the hose too long. We already are having issues of, if we run the hose too long on our well, it goes dry. We gotta wait hours until it can come back up. This house is going up our, you know, Marktown and everywhere else, we have these issues. Where's the agriculture and land preservation in this zoning? I know there's other people in here got the same question. You know, the aquifer, whatever. I just, that's my concern. Offer growth, maybe keep it condensed where the infrastructure's already there. Don't affect us. Don't affect us to the one that raise cattle and hogs, do good for the community. Gentleman back here said, you know, Washington's already letting China come in buying these farms. We're already importing our cattle. Why can't we raise it here? Why can't we have a push for that? That's all I got.
Okay, thank you. All right, going back to this side of the room. Have we missed anybody who needs to speak who hasn't spoken yet? Okay. Going back to this side of the room. Is anybody who wants to speak that hasn't spoken yet? All right, then I will give you two minutes if you want, if you...
I don't even need to come up. I'm from Columbia, and I need to go. I just want to know, because I raised questions, whether we'll be getting another letter or there'll be another meeting to know further what this council is deciding, or where you are in progress of a final decision.
Okay, we'll take that down.
So if the letter you received, it has my contact information on it, and the contact information for my planner. If you call us, we'll be happy to answer every question that you have. This is the second reading, so after today, it is enforceable, but they have one more reading before it becomes actual written recorded law. But like I said, just call that number or email me, and I will answer all of your questions.
Okay, anybody else over here I've missed? Over here, last chance.
Can I ask you one more question?
Yes, ma'am.
Like I said, the cows have owned that land for over two hundred years. Are they just gonna come one day and take our land from us? We have lots of land, and we are agriculture.
Just don't have to know, we'll just take it up later in the ordinance. All right, so I think I've called on everybody. I think you had, the administrator had two or three people who submitted written comments, and one of them read it because they couldn't be here tonight.
Thank you. I do have three sets of written comments. First off, Scott Cooper, 342 Sweetwater Road. Dear Edgefield County Council and staff, I regret being unable to attend your public hearing on Tuesday, August 12, 2025, regarding the proposed map of the recently approved Rural Agricultural District. This letter is written with close to thirty years of reflection. I hope it is received in the thoughtful manner in which it was written. Even though I have been visiting Edgefield County my entire life, as an adult, I first seriously began considering moving here in the mid-nineties. Suzie and I waited to move here until after our youngest son graduated from high school in 2013. I embrace the concept of creating an agricultural district. In an effort to help as you pursue agricultural policy at the local level, and perhaps helping influence public policy at state and national levels, I would like to give each county council member a book, which he did. Bold Return to Giving a Dam, One Farm, Six Generations, and the Future of Food, written by Will Harris, owner of the White Oak Pastures. In 2015, following visiting Joel Salatin's Polyface Farm in Swoop, Virginia, where we attended a farm-to-consumer legal defense fund conference, Suzie and I spent a couple of days touring Mr. Harris's farm in Bluffton, Georgia. The story of the Harris family transitioning from a monoculture operation to a regenerative, sustainable model, and how that revived a dying rural community while at the same time producing quality, clean food is simply amazing. I add this to your library along with A Small Farmer Public, written by John Klar, which I gave each of you in July 2023. One of the things I have learned from investing over a decade in agriculture is that not all soil is created equal. Actually, the soil on my farm in the Sweetwater community of Edgefield County is exceptionally difficult to build soil depth because it is mostly sand. Both Polyface Farm and White Oak Pastures have rocky, clay, and dark soil base, enabling the land to rebuild soil depth and the microbial activity which is important in the production of nutrient-dense food as cattle and other animals graze. While my choice not to use chemicals on our land in the Sweetwater, in Sweetwater for the last decade has vastly increased insect and bird populations, we will never be able to build a soil depth to be as agriculturally productive as other regions. I started my letter to you sharing this even though it is unrelated to the proposed zoning you're considering, because food production is actually very important to me from resiliency, healthcare, and a national security standpoint. While not our initial motivation for moving to Edgefield County, it became a large portion of the motivation following family healthcare issues and studying how food systems impact healthcare in the early 2000s. I believe the proposed map you are considering has very little to do with agriculture, even though it is in the name the planning commission created and you approved a couple of months ago. This proposed map, in my opinion, is really about creating an estate lot district. In general, I am not opposed to the concept of an estate lot district. I actually live on an estate lot, which is somewhat of a family heirloom. I am the fourth generation to reside in and steward our family home, which sits surrounded by dozens of acres of mostly sandy soil. I understand the motivations for how this map was drawn and what the objectives are. I also understand the angst some residents feel about the demographic changes taking place, which is increasing our region's population and the resulting need for housing, not to mention the price of real estate, including raw land. The truth is, I am praying for you as you consider making decisions which will impact the economic vitality of our future, not merely for individual landowners, but for the country, county as a whole. It is my belief that more thought needs to be put into this map. I could elaborate a lot on this as well. Instead, it is my hope that as elected leaders, you will have an honest discussion about it. I've heard it said on more than one occasion, this is what the people want. It is my belief you are elected to represent economic principles in addition to listening to people. The South Carolina Department of Commerce provides opportunities for elected officials to attend their Economic Development Institute and their annual Rural Community Summit, which was recently held in North Augusta to learn these principles. Simply doing what the most vocal voices request can lead to pendulum swings which will not yield the best long-term economic results for a healthy, resilient community. And I am happy to discuss this more individually with any member who would be interested on a one-on-one basis or in a group of three. I understand only two of you can meet at a time. Included in this letter is my editorial to the Edgefield advertiser titled Economics of Real Estate, and a flyer from an organization titled Up for Growth Action, which addresses some of the regulatory barriers to housing supply. It might be a good resource for you if you choose to research that issue further. Wishing you all the best as you strive to make the best decisions for the long-term health of our community. Henry F. Cooper, 342 Sweetwater Road. To the Edgefield County Council, just as a supplement to Scott's reference to the Sweetwater Community Center, I'd add that in 2012, my wife and I ensured that the updated deed to the property originally donated by my grandmother would accommodate further amenities such as the pickleball courts once the renovations to the community center were completed. That is where my father began grade school over a century ago. Having lived all over the US and overseas, my wife and I had seen what happens when growth is helter-skelter, and we believed planning always makes sense. We wanted our surrounding neighborhood to welcome young homeowners, especially if they have young children. Thus, I believe it is a mistake to eliminate similar possibilities from such a major Edgefield County area near a growing center, which Augusta and the Savannah River site now pose. As I understand it, these constraints would even produce such, would even preclude such developments as Mount Venge, clearly a development that benefits the entire county through the taxes these folks pay. I therefore urge the planning commission and county council not to eliminate such future Joyce Campbell, 26 Sunset Circle. I am an eighty-two-year-old Edgefield County resident and voter. I own a five-and-a-half acre lot with improvements, and another five-and-a-half acre lot of raw land zoned agricultural, and received the letter regarding the proposed zoning change. I am physically unable to attend the public meeting, but wanted you all to know that I agree with the proposed changes and the vision for Edgefield County, South Carolina. I'd also like for my raw land acreage to remain agriculturally zoned. Thank you for your service to our community. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, with that, ladies and gentlemen, the public hearing on this ordinance 2425-001 is now closed, and we will move on with the rest of the agenda. Next council is the consent agenda. There are three items on it. Is there any of those items we need to put into new business? Hearing none. If there's a motion to give the consent agenda approval as presented.
Some second.
All right, I believe that Ms. Ireland made the motion, and Mr. Talbert seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none, or those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed, the motion passes unanimously.
Can we tell everyone that they may want to stay? Because we're going to discuss everything that was just brought up. If you're interested in the zoning, you're probably going to want to stay.
Everyone who's leaving, some questions are going to be answered.
Yeah, you're gonna probably want to stay. Yes. Ms. Hillman, please stay.
Okay, council, we'll move to old business, which is where we are talking about. Consideration to approval of second reading of ordinance 2425-011 and ordinance to amend the Edgefield County zoning map to include changes for the newly-created Rural Agricultural Land Preservation Zoning District. So we heard a lot of counsel during the public hearing. I will ask our administrator and assistant administrator, maybe they'd sort of like to run through some of these questions and answers, and so before we discuss it.
Okay, so I want to address some of her concerns first. The lot size is a minimum, not a maximum. You will not have, there's no taking of land. So you can, you can have 260 acres, no land is being taken. What it means is that when somebody comes to split land up to make a subdivision in the future, they will not be able to create a lot that is less than two acres in size. So if you have, you know, two and a half acres, the county's not making you get rid of half an acre. That half an acre is yours, you'll just continue to have your 2.63 acre lot. There will not be any taking of property. But if you wanted to divide a lot, let's say you had five acres and you wanted to split some out of it, this zoning would make you mandatorily have at least two acres to create a new lot. Also, zoning is not retroactive, there's a grandfathering clause. So any existing lot that is less than two acres is grandfathered in indefinitely. This only applies to the creation of new lots in the future. So I wanted to address that first, because I don't want anybody to be under the impression that the county is condemning property. Now, to give you a little background, one of the questions was how did this happen? How did it come to be? So after the luck company came and created a rock quarry out on Woodlawn Road, I'm sure that some of you in here remembered part of that, a group of about forty citizens was very concerned, and they came to a planning commission meeting, and they asked me to create a preservation district to address the majority of those concerns. I drafted the first draft of this, this has been changed many times, you know, over the course of six or seven months. It's not the original. I took that draft, I gave it to the planning commission, and they held public meetings with those citizens, and changed, tweaked, and modified it until it was what those citizens wanted. Then it went through the normal planning commission process, where it has a public hearing in the planning commission, and a recommendation is made to county council. The area that was chosen is an area that is primarily agricultural in nature. There are residents, we all know that. There are other smaller uses spread throughout, but predominantly it's agriculture. So when you look at the use table, which I believe one gentleman that has already left said is very confusing, I can, I'm happy, if you, if you look at the letter I sent you, I'd be happy to answer your questions in depth. But basically, what the use table is stating is if it is industrial manufacturing, it's not allowed. So you can sell products, you can't make products, so you can't put in a factory. But that doesn't mean you can't put in a grocery store or a gas station, you know, et cetera, et cetera. It allows all agricultural uses. Not a single agricultural use is restricted at all, period. And then it allows all residential uses with no restrictions. The only things that are restricted are large-scale commercial uses, so big-box stores, think Lowe's, think Home Depot, think things of that nature, and all industrial uses, specifically manufacturing, mining, things of that nature. The lot size, one gentleman said, you know, road frontage, et cetera, is, is uniform. It is, all zoning is uniform. You can't, you can't have separate rules for every single lot. That, that's a, that's an order of magnitude that's, you know, staff could never do that. Then one, one person was concerned with taxes. This is use zoning. So this, this type of zoning affects your land use. Your tax zoning is a completely separate type of zoning, and your tax zoning is applied to your current use of the property. So if you're currently using your property as agriculture, your tax zone will stay agriculture until you change the use of that property. If you go and build commercial on that property, then your tax bill's going to change, because your tax zoning is going to be re-designated as, you know, commercial or industrial, whatever you're using it for. But use zoning does not affect tax zoning. Tax zoning is only changed when you change the use of your property. Any other questions you want me to answer?
Yeah, I got a question. If this meeting is over and he said it'll be finalized, why did you, it's wrong to have a meeting?
So let me answer that. We've been having meetings about this, as he said, for six or seven months. Please don't interrupt me if I'm talking to you, please, or you're out of order. If you ask a question, I'm answering your question. So let me answer your question. The answer to your question is, as, as Dr., excuse me, Mr. Hart just said, we are having these meetings for months, and I would encourage people to go back and look at the last two months, which are recorded, which are on YouTube, and you can see long discussions about this, reading the maps, talking about the maps, and as was said in that letter, Mr. Hart be happy to meet with anybody on this, either in person or on the phone. So there's still this reading, if council passes it, and the next reading. So I want to get back to the questions and answers.
Just one more statement, because that was a question. Yes, we have been talking about this for quite some time. I know that a lot of people, unless they get something in the mail, they have no idea that it's occurring. I encourage everybody to go to edgefieldcounty.sc.gov, that's the county website. We post every single meeting we have on that website. All of the documents related to this zoning district, including a summary document, so if the, if the maps and the charts are too confusing, there's a summary also listed on there. It's under the planning commission page on the, on the county website. It is titled RA zoning. Can't miss it. In the letter, my contact information is there. You might not get me directly, but somebody in my office will answer whatever question you have. So any question that I am not about to answer that they ask, please feel free to send me an email or call me, I'm happy to answer them.
Okay, now, have we answered all the questions, you think, basically? Stand by. All right, so council, I'm looking at you first, the five of us. Are there questions that we wanted to make sure were answered tonight? Did everybody hear?
Yes, can I speak now? Okay. It's been very hard to sit here, because there is so much confusion. People don't understand what's going on here. And it's frustrating for me, because like Doc said, we have been discussing this for more than six months. Doc said, we have been discussing this for more than six months, really. So, I, to your question, you want to know how we got here. Several people asked that, so I would like to backtrack a little bit for you and explain. And first of all, Doc told you, no impact on your taxes. You know, this is, we're not dealing with anything like that. And I think there's a bit of confusion as to people thinking we're taking the land away. It's actually the opposite. This is not an invitation to development. It's to protect against development. And let me tell you how this started. So, most of you understand that the water department isn't running lines for water and sewer, and you need that for subdivision. But what developers will do is they will run the lines from the existing lines and create a subdivision, much like the one that we see, we're in litigation over right now, in the Meriwether area. So, those residents were very upset about it coming, extremely upset, came to us. That started the idea of how can we protect against the, that property has land surrounding it that potentially could run more lines, more development. You see? It spreads. How do we protect that? So, that was when the RA was started, the creation of the RA began, to protect that area. As planning commissions started meeting and holding these meetings, talking about this, where should it go, doing the map part of it, where did it make sense to go? We had a phenomenal turnout from residents saying, well, I want it to come here. I want it to come to my neighborhood because I don't want to see subdivisions. I don't want to see small lots. And let me tell you, in every town hall meeting I have held, and I've held a lot in my district, I'm District Two, I've held a lot of town hall meetings, especially during, after the LMO debacle, which I wasn't on here for that, came in on the end. We got that all straight, squared away. But so many town halls, but overwhelmingly, 99% of the people said, we do not want small lots. We want large lots, two acres or more. And so, this is what, this is in response to those people who have asked for you to protect my property so that it cannot be, or the property around me cannot be developed into small lots or subdivisions. That's what this is. This is not about taking your property. This is not about creating small developments everywhere, little lots everywhere. This is about maintaining the rural character of our district, about protecting the nature, the, what we moved, I grew up here, so this is my home, so I didn't move here. This, yeah. So, I want it to stay rural, and I don't want to see, and it, and the Meriwether area is exploding, and we are trying to protect against that explosion. That is what this is. And I'm sorry that everybody got their feathers ruffled, and there was this confusion, but if there are questions, we are here. And like Doc said, and Chairman Campbell said, it is, we have discussed this. Go back, last month, I spoke on this at length as well, you know, and I've had people call me, I've had people send me emails, please explain this to me, tell me what's going on. I'm sorry you lost sleep, Mrs. Hillman, about this, because that was unnecessary, I think. I'm hoping we've allayed some of your fears now. I think that some of the other people maybe as well, we've explained some things to. I don't know if that's helped any, what I've had to say. But at the end of the day, I'd just like you to know that this was in response to staving off high-density subdivisions. It was, the map you see now was probably 99% citizen-driven. They came in, they poured over, Mr. Mickey was here, poured over the maps, looked at the maps during the PC when they took this up for months and months. And fortunately, during PC, we had lots of different, we had a set of PC members, then we had some leave, so we had another set come on. All of those people had a hand in this, the creation. So, it's been a working, fluid idea to get to this point, and so, this is where we are. So, I hope this answers some questions. I don't know if there's any more that I can say on it at this point. I feel like I've tried to cover everything that I was taking notes on, that I wanted to be able to speak specifically to. But again, y'all can go back and look, and you can contact me as well if you have any more questions. And Doc, because he's the smarter of the two, so, but thank y'all. Thank y'all for coming.
Looking at counsel, any questions?
I'd like to touch on the affordable housing question. There is affordable housing in Edgefield County. It may be located in the city of North Augusta, but it's in Edgefield County. You've got Gregory Landing, you've got Windsor wide open down there off of rural road. Gregory Landing is fixing to go into a Phase III, I think. There's pretty strong rumor going around, Capers Drive down there off of Gregory Lake Roads fixing to start a 200 house subdivision with maybe up to 600 down there. So, yeah, there is affordable housing in Edgefield County. There's a subdivision right outside, up here on the bypass in Edgefield, that's being built by a very fine developer. I mean, so, yeah, teachers and young married people do have a place to come live in this county. But like Tiffany mentioned earlier, the news has been out there. We hold a town hall meeting every March, me and her, at Sweetwater Community Center, have for two years since I've been elected, and this is where we get this information. This is where y'all have a chance to come talk to us. Chief Deputy Ramey's there with the sheriff, Bill Hickson, our representative is there. So, we advertise this, but like I said, our numbers are on the webpage. You can call any of us, day or night, and we'll answer any questions y'all may have.
Anything else from counsel? Okay. I'm looking at you two. Anything else we need to know tonight?
Did I miss anything?
No, sir.
Okay. Counsel, then, if there's no other questions or comments from counsel, is there a motion to give second reading to ordinance number 2425011?
So moved.
Mr. Moody makes the motion. There are seconds. And Dr. Kenyon, seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none. Are those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed. Motion passes unanimously. Next, counsel is going to go into an executive session. You can stay where you are. We're going to go in the room back here. It's a brief executive session to discuss pending litigation, so do I have a motion to go into executive session for that reason?
So moved.
Say, Dr. Kenyon made the motion, and Ms. Ireland, seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none. Are those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed. Motion passes unanimously.
Clerk, when she lets me know we're back online, we're gonna resume. All right, we're back online. So counsel, I need a motion to come out of executive session, please. Dr. Kenyon makes a motion, and Mr. Talbert seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed, motion passes unanimously. So the council is back out of executive session. No votes were taken in executive session. And now we're turning to, returning to open session, which brings us to new business. New business item one, we took up earlier, counsel, in the meeting. So we now move to new business number two. Consideration of approval of Resolution 2526-0002, a resolution accepting a national settlement of opioid litigation and proposed South Carolina allocation agreement. I'll ask our administrator if he'd like to give us some details on this, please.
Thank you. This is an opioid settlement involving Sandoz as the defendant. Our council has recommended that we accept this settlement. Settlement monies are distributed by the state for opioid prevention, treatment, and education grant awards. We have been participating in this grant program. Edgefield County, in fact, has applied for several, and each year we have received the grant money that is dedicated for Edgefield County. And we're putting it to good use, so this will add to the pot there. Thank you.
Questions or comments from counsel? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve Resolution 2526-0002?
Some move.
Let's see, Ms. Ireland makes a motion, I guess Mr. Moody would second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed, motion passes unanimously. New business item number three is consideration of approval of Resolution 2526-0004, a resolution accepting a national settlement of opioid litigation and proposed South Carolina allocation agreement. Again, I'll call on the administrator.
This opioid settlement involves Purdue Sackler as the defendant. The use of the funds is the same as the previous settlement we referenced.
Okay, thank you. Questions or comments from counsel? Hearing none, is there a motion to give approval to Resolution number 2526-0004?
Some move, Mr. Chairman.
Talbert makes a motion, is there a second? And Dr. Kenyon seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed, motion passes unanimously. And one of the changes in the agenda, we moved number six up to now, because it's keeping everything together. So this is consideration of approval of Resolution 2526-0005, a resolution accepting a national settlement of opioid litigation and a proposed South Carolina allocation agreement. Again, I'll ask the administrator for any details.
This particular opioid settlement involves eight companies, AlvoGen, Amneal, Apatex, Hikma, Indivior, Meline, Sun, and Zitis as the defendants. And again, our council recommends we accept this settlement.
Okay, questions or comments from counsel? Hearing none, is there a motion to give approval to Resolution 2526-0005?
Some move.
Mr. Moody makes the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Ireland, second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed, motion passes unanimously. Next counsel is number four, under new business, which is consider approval of Resolution 2526-0003, a resolution authorizing the purchase of the medical clinic located at 801 Mobley Street, Johnston, SC 29832, formerly occupied by Dr. Morgan, in the amount of $10. So I'll ask the administrator if he'd like to give us a few details on this one, please.
Yes, thank you. So we talked about this a little earlier. The representatives from Self, in particular, spoke about wanting to provide medical care in Johnston, in coordination with the county and lease agreement with this particular building. Well, this particular resolution would be for us to purchase this building from the town of Johnston for $10. This is Dr. Morgan's former clinic. It is in the town of Johnston. We do this with express purpose to have medical, a medical clinic continue to operate in the town of Johnston. We believe this action will be of tremendous benefit to the community. Now, by law, to purchase a property, the county must obtain an appraisal. We did just a month or so ago, and the appraised value was $295,000. So we recommend approval for this purchase. Thank you.
And this recommendation comes from the town of Johnston, who passed an ordinance allowing them to sell it to us.
That is correct. We have a willing seller and a willing buyer.
See, as we discussed before, I think, counsel, this just becomes under the umbrella of Self, and also, we don't have to worry about having another signator, the town of Johnston, in our, in our agreement. So it just makes it a lot cleaner and a lot easier. Are there any questions or comments from counsel? Hearing none, is there a motion to give approval to Resolution 2526-0003?
Some move, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Talbert makes a motion, and I think I'll be happy to second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed, motion passes unanimously. The final item of new business is number five, consideration of approval of first reading of ordinance 2526-001, an ordinance to amend Chapter 24, Land Development, Section 252, Land Development Other Than a Subdivision, and 285, County Planning Administrator of the Edgefield County Code of Ordinances. Again, I'll turn it over to the administrator to give us some details on this, please.
Thank you. So as counsel will remember, we took this up a couple of years ago, as we changed the roles in approval, in approving land development. Unfortunately, we did not change two words in one section, which caused a conflict with another section. So we failed to replace Planning Commission with Planning Administrator in one sentence, and yet those duties are listed as Planning Administrator in another section of the ordinance. This action will correct that.
Okay. Questions or comments from counsel? Okay, hearing none, is there a motion to give first reading to ordinance 2526-001?
Some move.
Mr. Talbert makes the motion, is there a second?
Second.
And Ms. Ireland, second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed, motion passes unanimously. Next is our second public comment period. So I'll ask the clerk, she'll bring me that list, please. Just like the first public comment period, not the public hearing, but the public comment period, there's a five-minute time limit, and there is, you'll get a warning at four minutes and five minutes. Again, we don't do that in public hearings, but we do have to do those in public comment sections. So a total of 30 minutes. And counsel, if it's okay with you, I am going to, without objection, I would like to get, since I know a lot of people want to talk about the RV park, I wanted to ask Doc if he would give us just a brief explanation, and the administrator, where we are in this process of the, of the RV park, so everybody have a good understanding before they give their comments.
Okay, so Planning Commission recommended that it not be approved. The developer listened to their listed concerns, and he wants to have a chance to address them. Of course, I told him that because of the state law, if it exceeds 60 days, the approval is automatic, so a decision has to be rendered within that time period. He agreed to extend that time period to 90 days to give himself time to go and discuss it more with the Planning Commission, and that's it. Nothing else has been done, so.
When you say discuss it with the Planning Commission, what you mean is-
In a work session.
At a public setting.
Of course, they can call planning commissioners anytime they want to, but in order to talk to all of them, just like if they wanted to talk to all of you, then it needs to be in a, in a meeting that's accessible to the public.
Okay. So to repeat back, the Planning Commission voted it down.
Correct.
And we're in a 90-day holding period now, where nothing's going to transpire, whatever that, when did that 90 days start? Do you know right off the top of your head?
I don't. I have, I can send you a copy of the letter. When that 90 days is up, either I have to issue a final, or it's automatically approved under state law. So one of the two things has to happen at the end of that period, or they have to agree to another extension.
Okay. And one last question, to make sure, again, we're all on the same page. When you say approve, if, if in that 90 days you approve it, that is preliminary approval to pass it up to DES and DOT and those folks?
So that is, that is correct, for the most part. This is still in the preliminary process. I do not have copies of anything from DES. I do not have copies of anything from DOT. I don't even have copies from things from their engineers, so there's absolutely, if I had to make the decision today, it would be a denial. I just don't have the information to form an opinion on it. So typically, in most cases and scenarios, a preliminary is granted so that they don't waste their money on spending, you know, environmental concerns, et cetera, et cetera, can cost a lot of money to do the engineering on. So generally, the preliminary aspect of it is to get those zoning issues out of the way, so that they can then move on to that. That way, I'll put it a different way. It would be terrible to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars doing engineering and going through state agency permitting, and going through federal agency permitting, et cetera, only to be told, yeah, it's not zoned for that, you can't put it there. So the preliminary is sort of that stage where a site plan is, is brought to the county's attention, and yes, it meets the zoning requirements, no, it does not, and then they move on from there. I do want to clarify, though, our preliminary approval does not mean they cannot do engineering. That's a private thing. So they can go ahead and do all the engineering they want to, they can submit all that to DOT, they can submit all that to DES, if they want. It's a risk, because if I turn around and deny it, then they spend all that money on, on those things, and they have no assurance that they'll be able to move forward. So generally speaking, they don't, but that doesn't mean they can't, just to be clear.
So I wanted to tell everybody to have that information, because that may inform some of your comments, and maybe not. So anyway, so thank you for allowing that, counsel. All right, we're gonna start the public comment period. I'm gonna take it, and just so you know, I don't think most of these people are still here, but in case you are, it's a 30-minute limit, so just keep that in mind. A total of five minutes per person. With that, I'll start with Charmaine Carpenter. No Charmaine Carpenter? All right, then Brian Leonard? No Brian? Randy Dietrichson?
Good evening, Chairman, and council members. My name is Randy Dietrichson, I live at 45 Remo. I am the president of the Horse Creek Nature Reserve. I'm gonna talk to you about who we are and why we exist. Horse Creek Nature Reserve consists of seven neighborhoods, Remo, Bassett Terrace, Windy Ridge, Countryway, Sabal Lane, Whitlock, and Rock Springs. We have a total of 122 homes within our neighborhoods. Horse Creek Nature Reserve was initially formed and propelled into action because of the proposed Blackstone RV Park land development, and our neighbors are being, are tired of not being heard by the county about land development issues. Within 30 days, we have drafted and approved our bylaws. We've elected our officers. We filed our Oracle's incorporation with the state. We submitted our paperwork to the IRS for 501(c)(3) status. We are now registered by South Carolina as a nonprofit organization, and we await a letter from the IRS. We are an environmental organization, and we're in partnership with Savannah River Keeper. Savannah River Keeper is also our advisors and our trainers. We exist to protect and honor the health of the headwaters of Horse Creek and Horse Creek itself within Edgefield and Aiken County to the Savannah River Basin. We're also promoting the historic history of Dave Drake, the potter. We're going to honor him because of his involvement with Horse Creek. Our vision: Horse Creek, supporting communities and ecosystems through Edgefield and Aiken County to the Savannah River Basin. Our mission: The leading guardian of Horse Creek, actively restoring and protecting its headwaters from Edgefield County to Langley Pond to Aiken and the existing waters to the Savannah River Basin, using education, advocacy, and collaboration. Our values: Passionate advocacy, empowerment of others to protect their tributaries, their ponds, their interconnections with Horse Creek and the water tables and their wells. Inclusive and diverse relationships and high-impact collaborations. Equitable access to the use of Horse Creek waterways. Courageous leadership and unwavering dedication. Accessible data and science-based solutions. And innovation and creative problem solving. That we are concerned about their potential to harm Horse Creek. Moral analysis later date. We'd also like to thank Councilman Moody for his initiative and responsible legislation to propose changes to the RV park ordinances 2479. Thank you, sir. And please remember that when Mr. Tom McCain talks to you about Burke County, Georgia, 6,000 RVs, along with their transit workers for Plant Vogel, and how they had to handle that. At the urge of Sheriff Roland, we have spent two and a half hours meeting with their Burke County Chairman, Chairman of the Planning Commission, and he's, he's also the Deputy Sheriff, Lee Webster, to discover how they handled the influx of those 6,000 RVs with the transit workers for Plant Vogel. Thank you, appreciate your time.
Thank you. Next is Jay Next is Jason Culp.
Good evening. Welcome back. Good evening, Chairman and council members. My name is Jason Culp, and for the Horse Creek Nature Preserve, we have formed a neighborhood watch committee, and I've been, I guess, drew the short straw to be the elected lead for this organization in our neighborhood in partnership with law enforcement for Edgefield County. As Randy stated, we have seven neighborhoods of nature preserve consisting of 122 homes. We originally wanted to get this together with the, the news that the RV park was coming in and just social media and the reputation of man camps coming to RVs and the neighborhoods, the uptick in crime and other, other issues was something that we felt this was needed to be put in place. Now we're, we're going to keep going with this to provide long-term protection of our families and property. We met with Sheriff Roland on Monday, let him know our plans on how we're starting this neighborhood watch and that, and he, we discussed with him the partnership with his organization to be the eyes and ears to enable the, if we see it, we report it. And also to provide and to get timely, relevant notices from them or us to give them to, or us to give them information about what currently is concerning us and them, so we can help keep a watchful eye. We were honored to meet Major Ramey and Lieutenant Marquez in our meeting, our Horse Creek Nature Preserve meeting last night. They were very professional in their presentation, gave us some documentation and some paperwork to further aid the development of our neighborhood watch program. This neighborhood watch program is sponsored by the Nationals, the National Sheriff's Association and National Neighborhood Watch Institute. Both, we've become members. We have a closed neighborhood watch Facebook page that's up and running, and we've paired it with federal, state, and county law enforcement. We've been sharing plans with Sheriff Roland and Edgefield Sheriff's Department, how we are going to be installing a network of security cameras in our neighborhood that we can monitor as residents and to give them the opportunity to have eyes and ears in our neighborhood for other issues that might arise. Our goal is to have that for streaming that Edgefield has access to, and also for, for residents, the ones that want to have that access. This is, according to Sheriff Roland, this is the first neighborhood watch organized, or organization to approach him, and we want to become the model organization for the county. So along with that, off script, I guess, the, with the wanting to get this neighborhood watch in, I know Edgefield County is looking at everything that they do at the 30,000-foot level, and even tonight's discussions about the rezoning and stuff, you're going to be inundated with requests for construction and planning and this and that and the other. But I'm asking you to sit down at your dining room table with your family and think of the fact that what percent of risk is worth this RV park going in in our neighborhood? What, what percent of crime is okay? What percent of traffic or environmental impact is okay? And that's what the neighborhood is, is looking at, is our way of life and our security there. We shouldn't have to spend the money and the time to develop this just in preparation for what might come to our neighborhood, but I think in the long run, it will be a benefit to everybody that lives in that neighborhood over time. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Dawn and Barry Hollenberg? Okay, I'm just reading what's on the list. I'm sorry, whoever it was to get.
Well, mine relates to what he just said, so I think I'll go ahead.
Okay.
Good, good evening. My name is Barry Hollenberg, and I live on Brim Oak Road, and I'm the Secretary of the Horse Creek Nature Preserve. I'm going to make some really very strong statements this evening, but I know wherein I speak. I spent the entire decade of the 70s slowly working my way through college, mostly bartending and welding. I learned the hard way that even the roughest bars I worked in were safer than working with or living near the men employed at the uranium mine, the drilling rigs, and the construction sites where I welded. Man camp RV parks are temporary housing facilities established to conduct, to accommodate a large influx of workers using construction or resource, resource extraction into remote and rural areas. There is a mountain of evidence that they lead to increased crime rates in the surrounding community. Why? A sudden population surge in well-paid transient unaccompanied male workers will overwhelm law enforcement's ability to monitor and prevent crime. It will create tense relations between neighborhood residents and the transient occupants. Transient workers have no connection to our community, which means lower social accountability and a higher likelihood of risky and unlawful activities. While their jobs provide them with heightened disposable incomes, the hyper-masculine camp culture and the isolation from their own communities encourages drug and alcohol abuse and exacerbates mental and emotional problems. This leads to an increase in acts of misogyny, racism, and violence perpetrated by the men living there, and this has been well documented across the country. Occupants of the Brim Oak, of the proposed Brim Oak man camp will have no onsite supervision or security personnel, thus providing an ideal opportunity for behavior unacceptable in a quiet neighborhood to include violent crime. Without strong, clear ordinances, man camps will quickly spawn new businesses detrimental to the neighborhood: liquor stores, adult bookstores, movie theaters, and strip clubs. I'm not imagining this. For a nearby example, talk to Burke County, Georgia Planning Commission Chair Deputy Sheriff Lee Webster. Statistics across the country report sharp increases in specific crimes related to man camps: illegal drugs, traffic accidents, frequent noise and disturbance of the peace incidents, theft, breaking and entering, physical altercations, prostitution, juvenile sex trafficking, sexual harassment, and rape. Studies of American temporary worker camps between 2006 and 2012 revealed alarming crime surges. Aggravated assaults were up 70%. Homicide and rape both up 30%, and sexual harassment up 54%. Specific examples of these are: An establishment of a North Dakota man camp caused a 54% increase in rape of women, and although the actual numbers were smaller, there was an increase of 72% in sexual assault of young males. And while similar communities that were unaffected by the man camps were experiencing an 8% drop in sexual crimes. Burke County, Georgia Plant Vogel Construction built four large RV parks. Before they could get their county ordinances updated, they had 6,000 RVs camping in people's backyards. In addition to the crime rise, guess where their black water went? If you don't get comprehensive plans and ordinances squared away, Edgefield County will become just another ugly statistic in an ugly place. And if you don't help prevent this Brim Oak RV camp development, how will you feel when you read police reports about some tragedy that should have never happened? Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Tom McCain.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mr. Chairman and members of council, my name is Tom McCain, and I am the treasurer of the Horse Creek Nature Preserve. Most of you know I was the county administrator from 1985 to 1995. So I fully understand how the county goes about making ordinances and zoning laws. What troubles us today is the county lack of ability to codify the comprehensive plan into ordinances and zoning laws in a timely manner. We are being told the county does, doesn't have enough personnel or the right personnel to do it. For example, the tree ordinance has been in draft for a six and a half years, for six and a half years. You paid Robert and Company to create the comprehensive plan, but it could be so much more effective if in terms were codified into ordinance. According to your website, it was adopted more than six years ago on June 4, 2019, and revised by Hart Clark on July 6, 2021. You have had lawsuits because the Planning Commission referred to it when making decisions on land development applications. The Planning Commission referred it to the best interest of our citizens and the environment of Edgefield County. We think the comprehensive plan is a great piece of work. We, the citizens of Edgefield County, implore you to turn the comprehensive plan into ordinance today. Hire a firm to help. You make it, don't have enough staff to make it a priority. You paid Robert and Company to create it, but it's worthless until it's codified. Why not hire a firm to convert it? This is long overdue. We asked the county council to declare a moratorium on land development until this is accomplished. Why, may you ask? Because we have spoken to Burke County, Georgia Planning Commission Chairman, Deputy Sheriff Lee Webster, who told us of problems they have, they had with transit contract workers at the Plant Vogel construction site, and by Burke County residents trying to make money off them. Before they knew it, they had more than 6,000 RVs sitting in various places, including people's yards and over the county, surely not disposing of their ways in a safe manner. The county was able to control these problems by making rapid changes to their ordinance. Lee said they had more than 300 new pages added to ordinance. Lee warned that Edgefield County is going to have the same problem with these new data centers coming in if we don't get ahead of the problem now. We have already, we have already heard about numerous Edgefield County landowners who want to take, who want to turn their property into RV parks to make quick money like the folks in Burke County did. Lee told us that Burke County is now a danger ghost town. Edgefield County is a beautiful palace with a pistland, pistland ruled agricultural environment. The vast majority of citizens moving here to enjoy safe, peaceful, healthy life. Please take what I'm giving to you tonight seriously and do the right thing. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, let's see. Hollifield, last name Hollifield? Yes, Dawn Hollifield.
My name's Dawn Hollifield, and I'm a resident of Edgefield County. Good evening, Chairman and council members. I'm a board member of Horse Creek Nature Preserve. Our organization seeks close, transparent communications with our county government. We have found, you know, your county website difficult to navigate and hard to find the information we seek. A few examples that we have found is when you go to the welcome tab, when it's, when you go to about us on page two, there, there are problem links at the bottom of the screen. The scgov dot home, it only gives you, it gives you, when you go to that page, page not found. Then when you go to southcarolina.gov policies, the link only goes to one policy, the privacy and security policy. The welcome tab, on the quick links, the page still lists DHEC, which only goes to error 404, unknown site, so it doesn't list South Carolina DES and South Carolina DOT. It is not that user-friendly. The county ordinances are under the residents tab. One of the things that we noticed under, like, under pending ordinances, it only lists one, spay and neuter policies. We've repeatedly been told that the county is working on many ordinance revisions to incorporate the comprehensive plan, however, those are not on the website. I've also noticed that on the actual Edgefield County homepage at the bottom, it has like proposed tree ordinance, but that's not under pending or anything, so I don't know if there's a pending ordinance, is there a proposed ordinance? It's, it's kind of hard to follow and keep up. But we also additionally, you know, Councilman Moody's revision of the ordinance 24-79, none of those could be found or listed either. The other thing, the residents tab has a frequently asked questions link, but it's just a listing of all the Edgefield County government offices. It's not like a frequently asked questions tab. Under the business tab for bids and proposals, under the proposal, it has one link, and it's just a PDF of rock minerals for Edgefield County. So we think that all of the submitted business proposals should be posted, including the Brim Oak RV camp proposal. And then again, under the businesses tab, under awards and results link, it has two items listed: the gravel bid award and the county building renovations. So we think that, you know, we should also have a list that includes all the current bids and like a historical catalog of all the results of, of that, since it says awards and results. The meetings tab, and this is kind of where, you know, I'm not that tech savvy, so when I click on it, I assumed if I click boards, committees, and commissions, it just has a complete calendar list, but it only goes from January to December 2020. I thought that's where all the meetings would be listed, like the month, the annual meetings every month, and the same for the Planning Commission. The only thing that it listed was the public notice for tonight's meeting. I think this page should also list like the annual meetings and have the monthly. I did look around and find like there's a calendar that you can click on, but I'm not that tech savvy, so.
Four minutes.
I would think that it would be under those two things, but. Under the offices tab too, under GIS special projects, that link goes to GIS office page, but there's no special project page. And then when I finally click on there, it says click here for the maps, but when I click on the page, it just says, welcome to the assessor's office, and I have to click and look to find search records, and that's where it takes me to the maps. So I mean, I just think that, you know, to be better informed citizens, you know, by updating the Edgefield County website and making it easier to navigate would definitely help everybody. Thank you for your time.
The next set of people I'm not sure are here anymore, but I, let's go with Katie Ard, John Hudson. Going to say this is maybe Bobby Wilson? Loretta Maccabee? John Quarles? Troy Duckworth? Dennis McLendon? Okay, that's everybody who signed up. Did I miss anybody? If there's no objection from council, yeah. If there's no objection from council, yeah, that's fine.
Thank you.
Tell us what your name is and such.
My name is Ashley Williams, and I actually live within about, less than a mile from the actual parcel. And I just wanted to add, and we can, we can discuss the statistics of it all day, but we all know that they're really not going to be provided due to the fact of the lack of reporting and being able to link it to it. Personally, I have eight-year-old twins, a boy and girl. They like to play outside, you know, they like to ride their bikes. They like to, I enjoy feeling like they're safe. I enjoy, you know, feeling that's our comfort zone. However, a situation like this, I did come across several years ago in the Union. I was traveling, and it was like, it was a worker camp, and these people, they had, they had a lot of money, they made a lot of money, they had incredibly nice RVs. However, they didn't have homes. So, you know, they traveled around, and that was their home. They trashed every place they went to. They were gone within about three months, and they treated women like trash. The drugs and the prostitution was something that you've seen in movies. I mean, it was absolutely ridiculous. The sexual assault, it'd make your stomach turn. To feel like something like that would be put around my children in this aspect when, you know, we came thinking it was a safe area. I pretty much grew up in Edgefield, always, you know, for the most part, felt safe, and this is just, honestly, this scares me to death. I'm really hoping it doesn't, you know, I know all the technicalities, and like I said, we can discuss the statistics all day, but at the end of the day, I mean, this is what it is. This is what we're looking at. And, I mean, it's scary. Would y'all want your, y'all's children next to something like this? I mean, men that are, yeah, they make a lot of money, because I know Blackston pointed out that very first time. These are, these are working men, they make a lot of money with very nice RVs, and that's great. But I used to know men made very, very good money, and they were broke by the end of the week because of the things that they spent it on. And it was, it was disgusting, and that's what they're going to turn the area into. I mean, they trashed everything around them, and they were gone. And then if somebody did report it, or by the time that it was tied to these individuals, the perpetrators were always gone. And nobody was held accountable, and these people are victims, you know, and it's a bad situation. And I really hope that y'all can see past all the other that's going on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Did we miss anybody else? Okay. Then we will close the Public Comment section, council, and move to reports from county council members. Does any county council member have a report tonight?
Just real shortly, I'd like to thank Aretha for taking care of four of us last week, as we went to the Council of Governments down in Charleston. She had our books ready for us. If we didn't know where to go, she told us where to go and what time to be there, and she handled us like her own little children, and I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah. I would like to express my gratitude for the opportunity to attend the South Carolina Association of Counties Annual Conference last week. Piggybacking on what Councilman Moody just said, I am pleased to share that Councilman Moody and County Secretary Ms. Eubank and I graduated at Level 1. We're waiting on, still waiting on Tiffany. She's coming on next year. The conference was highly informative. On Monday, I attended several sections, including one titled Measuring County Performance, presented by Bill Toms. He did a great job. He emphasized the importance of understanding our goals, our objectives, measures, and strategies. What he described as a good performance measurement system that helps us know what we are accountable for and if we are achieving that target. And as I was coming, leaving the session, I thought more about how my parents used to always say, "You never get too old to learn." That's all I have to say.
Okay. Thank you. Any other council member with a report tonight?
I have none.
Okay. Hearing none. We will move to the county administrators' report.
Thank you. I only have two things. I also wanted to commend Dr. Kenyon, Councilman Moody, and Clerk of the Council, Aretha Eubanks, for graduating Institute of Government Level 1. I commend them for improving their knowledge in local government because they can use that for the benefit of our county citizens. The other thing is, some may have noticed that our county library closed, I think, about a week ago. That is in preparation for an asbestos abatement on the flooring. That should take place beginning Monday, last about a week, and then we'll have to install new carpet and then get all the shelving and all the books back. So probably about three weeks from today, it will reopen, and it'll, it'll be a much better product, and that will be out of it, and you'll have new carpet. That's all.
Okay. Any questions or comments for the administrator? Okay, council, hearing none. We'll move to my comments, they're brief. I want to start by saying thank you to staff and the council members who attended the Association of Counties Annual Meeting last week. There's always good training there, and discussion with fellow council members from other counties is always beneficial. We learn things that way, and I appreciate and congratulate all those who graduated from the Association of Counties of Government training. I also want to thank the Edgefield County 250 Committee for the American Revolution, for its work on the monument and the dedication ceremony that was held on August 2nd, marking 250 years of the Revolutionary War. It was a great ceremony and reflective of the history of Edgefield County. Counsel, there's nothing else on the agenda. I'll be happy to entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, Mo.
And I believe Dr. Kenyon made the motion, and Ms. Ireland second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed, motion passes unanimously. Thank you, everybody, for attending.